Go ahead.
Oh, all right, that's me. All right, it's time for a chair. I'd like to call the meeting order. We only do this once a year, so just real quick what we're gonna do. We're gonna take a roll call with the sitting board. Then we'll do the pledge, opening statement for the meeting. And then we'll do oath of offices. And then we'll take a roll call again with the new board. And then we'll do president, vice president nominations, all right? So first roll call, Ms. Beneki.
Pardon.
Ms. Dresch.
Here.
Ms. Rassell Blair.
Here.
Ms. Crockett.
Yes, here.
Ms. Hoberl.
Here.
Ms. Hallingworth.
Here.
Mr. Knuckles.
Here.
Ms. Soddy.
Here.
March with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free public religion stance one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, going to read the statement concerning the open public meetings. Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given by the Superintendent of Schools in the following manner. On January tenth, two thousand twenty-four, On January 10th, 2024, notice of this meeting was posted on the interior of the school administration offices, 95 Grove Street, Haddonfield. Written notice was submitted and filed with the Haddonfield Borough Clerk and notices were emailed to the Courier-Post and the retrospect newspaper. All right, now we're gonna do the oath of offices. Hey, Steph. Editor. Come on up. All right. Everyone cares about you guys, so you can stay on camera. Here's the oath that you will read along with me. All right. A lot of numbers. All right, you raise your hand if you have to make. I, state your name.
I, Zach Almanari.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
And under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, state your name.
I, Stephanie Manolio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of a member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS 19:4-1.
RS 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Nor disqualified through the conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
NJS 18A:12-1.
NJS 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. So I have these plaques for you guys, and I think Polly would want me to also get a picture of you guys holding those plaques or else I'm drawing them.
I want you guys.
You know these plaques.
Keep John in mind. Colon, so there's.
So many things are this part.
And, yeah, they're rare.
Okay.
All right. It goes up. Yay. Thanks. All right. Roll call number two. Ms. Beneki.
Still present.
Ms. Draz.
Here.
Ms. Essingler.
Here.
Ms. Crooked.
Here.
Ms. Hoagrill.
Here.
Ms. Hollingworth.
Here.
Mr. Knuckles.
Here.
Mr. Ritter.
Here.
Ms. Sodik.
Here.
All right, now, as temporary chair, I'll be taking nominations for presidents of the Board of Education. Do you have any nominations?
I'm nominating.
I second your nomination. Oh, it sounds like many of us do.
Any other nominations?
We've heard she's good.
All right, I will take roll call votes for nominating Jamie Corcoran as board president. Ms. Beneki.
Yes.
Ms. Draz.
Yes.
Ms. Essingler.
Yes.
Ms. Crooked.
Yes.
Ms. Hoagrill.
Yes.
Ms. Hollingworth.
Yes.
Mr. Knuckles.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Ms. Sodik.
Yes.
Congratulations. You can turn the game play around.
Special on that. Okay, now, let's take nominations for vice president.
I'll nominate Linda. Me too. Very important. All right, I'll force it.
Any other nominations? All right, Mike, can you call, roll?
Ms. Beneki.
Yes.
Ms. Draz.
Yes.
Ms. Essingler.
Yep.
Ms. Hoagrill.
Yes.
Ms. Hollingworth.
Yes.
Mr. Knuckles.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Ms. Sodik.
Yes.
President Crooked.
Yes. The pause wasn't there, I was looking.
Oh, suspense.
Yes, I've noticed a public comment was after the agenda thing. That's only two, that doesn't mean off.
Just the moment I was about to say, just to live them.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, um, moving on to the reorg agenda, we'll start with public comments. I don't have my statements, but, um, does anyone like to make a public comment? Would you like to make a public comment? Okay. Okay, sorry, all right, so, um, moving on, we will be approving a series of things. It's recommended that the board extend the reappointment of the following four reorganization items from this meeting through the organization meeting in January 26, unless otherwise noted. Appointment of the coordinator for section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act 1973. Appointment of public agency compliance officer. Appointment of affirmative action officer. Appointment of liaison for homeless children and youths. Appointment of Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act officer. Appointment of Integrated Pest Management Coordinator. Appointment of School District Policy Coordinator. Appointment of District Wellness Policy Coordinator. Appointment of Purchasing Agent and Authorization to Award Contracts to Bid Thresholds and set quote, quote, threshold at 15% of bid threshold amount. Appointment of Asbestos Management Officer. Appointment of Safety and Health Designee. Appointment of Indoor Air Quality Designee. Appointment of Right-to-Know Officer. Appointment of Chemical Hygiene Officer. Appointment of Toxic Hazard Preparedness Officer. Appointment of Custodian of Records. Appointment of Alternate Custodian of Records. Appointment of a HARA Coordinator. Appointment of DCPP Liaison. Appointment of Educational Stability Liaison. Bylaws and Board Policies. Organizational Chart, District Curriculum. Teacher Evaluation Model, Principal Evaluation Model, Assistant Principal Evaluation, I'm sorry, yes, Assistant Principal Model. Supervisor Evaluation Model. Reflective Practice Protocol. Textbook List. Adoption of the Code of Ethics for School Board Members as it reads. Approval of Parliamentary Procedures. Annual Adoption of the Haddonfield School District Goals. Depositories for School Funds. Authorization to Sign Warrants. Open Public Meetings Act Matters. Adopting of Schedule of Meetings. Doctorate of Necessity. Approval of Tax Shelter Annuity Companies. Approval of the Omni Group Inc. as Third Party Administrator for Tax Shelters. Approval of Payment of Bills Between Meetings. Annual Approval of the 2025 Professional Development Plan. Annual Approval of Job Descriptions. And Annual Approval of the Affirmative Action Plan. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Steph and Linda, questions, comments?
Because I haven't cross-referenced it. Has someone cross-referenced double J for the scheduling meetings against all the major holidays?
Yes.
Great.
Well, we did discuss that, um, given the absence of Rachel, we might need someone to, who might want to take on that duty because she was really, really conscientious about that. Not that the rest of us aren't, but she was good at, she was good at it, and we kind of thought.
But like I said, I could have checked that before now, but haven't thought about it.
So it's a little bit of a moment.
You give a third.
Okay. Yeah, we did go through it, but.
Um, just a minor note that on LL, approval of tax shelter annuity companies, we're missing three. Numbered three.
The angle should be three.
The number three is missing. Bang, that should be three. There shouldn't be five. I could have said that more simply.
That's a major catch.
Yeah, just, oh, missing her.
I have a public. Well, I do have to torture you all, and I do have to read the Code of Ethics out. But, uh, since we're talking about the meeting schedule, I did want to know, on print, it might be wrong on that agenda here, but it's, it's great digitally. May 1st is the budget adoption, not April 10th.
Okay.
It would have to be after.
The meeting is still that day though, except for the.
It's just that the budget adoption meeting is May 1st.
So will that be a voting session then?
It will be.
Okay, so it'll just be advertised.
Yeah, just like.
It's actually extra meeting put in there because when the calendar falls, when you have the budget, you got to do the budget adoption. So the 10th meeting will be too late, and the April meeting will be too early, because of spring break. So we had to put an extra meeting in just when that's the last reason.
It's a tough year, and also, before that obstacle, the March meeting, we usually did it on the last Thursday of February, but we found that it was tough to get our stated numbers the same day, scramble as a finance committee, and then come, come to you guys same day. It was nice to submit it as always I possibly could, but give ourselves a little more breathing room. All right. I'm gonna read the Code of Ethics now.
Yeah.
All right, so the following are the Code of Ethics for school board members. A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are, they are well-run. E, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff aspirations of the community for its school. H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. I, I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. J, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. So everyone should have an acknowledgement or receipt of the Code of Ethics. If you haven't done so already, sign that, return to me before we leave. And then you can keep the copy, put it on the fridge, whatever. Uh, and then for Steph, Megan, Matt, there's also a, the oath to sign. Make sure you get back to me before we leave.
Anyone else have any comments on agenda items?
No.
Okay, Mike, can you call vote?
Ms. Beneki.
Yes.
Ms. Draz.
Yes.
Ms. Essingler.
Yes.
President Crooked.
Yes.
Vice President Hoagrill.
Yes.
Ms. Hollingworth.
Yes.
Mr. Knuckles.
Yes.
Ms. Sodik.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Okay, um, any items for future consideration?
I got one more thing. Just to let you know, this never happens. All the self-paced trainings are available for school boards.
Wow.
It's two, three, and four only. Sorry, Matt.
You have to take one if you've already been.
Yes.
You do. I'd like to welcome you back.
Pleased to be back. It's a honor.
Pleased to have you back. I know we should all know this, but, um, does everybody know what they're due this year?
Uh, everyone's gonna be registered. I know off the top of my head, I know you three are good. I don't think you three have to take. Uh, I think you guys might be in four.
Yeah, yeah, because this is.
Um, you, Mike, you might be three.
I'm three.
And Jess and Yushin, I think, are two. And Matt's one.
Oh, okay, here we go.
Are you gonna email this out or something?
Everyone's gonna be registered except for Matt.
Okay. So you said.
And you'll get, you'll get registration emails that you're registered to self-paste. And you can take it whenever you want. When there's a live version of it out, you can do that, or you can wait till the.
Great.
Till the workshop.
Mike, is the disclosure, like the financial disclosure form up already as well?
Yes, it is.
Great.
But this last week does not, because in our goals.
I don't know, I'm always late, and so I wanted to finally one year.
This week, your bail.
Okay, have it very early.
Until, uh, I think we get the month.
Okay.
I think we get it, don't call me that, we get the month, your bail. Do I have to wait until then? What's your line?
In our, in our goals, one of the months we would all take an additional class. This doesn't satisfy that, right? Okay.
Yeah, but if you went to the, um, the convention.
Right.
Those do, right.
Cool.
So if you didn't go to the convention, make sure that you take an additional class.
Were you gonna report back? Like, or was that not in the goals?
No, we, that was the goal, was to take it and report like a high-level summary.
Like somebody might get that one, so it was.
Because we're the three interesting points that I took away.
Well, we did some of it because some of it was, uh, just to catch, met up. So one of our core goals this year was to, um, take additional training and especially things that had to do with maybe a committee that you sat on or whatever. And we all thought that that was a really worthy goal. Um, for some of us, we, because there were a lot of referendum-related sessions, and we did come back and we talked about it because we talked about how, um, we learned that the day after the referendum, that, you know, when it passed, that people met and they talked about how, um, they took pictures, they kept the community abreast, and we took that part, and we've already done that. So we, we did approve a quick, uh, chuck, you, you gave approval before the holidays of the, the quick summary that we made for LRFP, and, and that is on the website now, so.
Yeah, and it probably, we didn't, we didn't couch it as this is what we learned.
Exactly.
Or I know, I mean, this is what we learned in our actual. But, so I think it kind of got integrated.
Right.
Um, but to your point, maybe if someone takes an additional class that isn't required, but the rest of us haven't taken, then let us know, and we'll make time in one of the meetings, um, one of the working sessions where you can report back.
Right, learned. And probably a good time to talk about, you know, the purpose of the working sessions. We said that we would have committee of the whole meetings on topics that made sense, topics that were timely, so that certainly would make sense. If somebody is taking training and they want to report back on what they learned, uh, just send a message to Jamie and make sure that we get that as part of the agenda for our working session.
And now that we're a couple of months in, I was gonna use my superintendent's report and that super committee to talk about the district goals and report back on those three goals and what the leadership team is doing to meet those goals.
Oh, good, yeah, that's great.
Work that in there.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, and we can, um, we can start thinking about what, any, any committees of the whole that we want to think about having before summer hits. So there's something, so much of our focus was on the referendum that we hadn't really had. Still is, still is. So what our committee of the wholes were very much discussing referendum and those types of things. So, um, if there's a topic that, that we think might be valuable, we can, we can, um, definitely do that. Um, good. All right, um, anything else before we adjourn? Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? All right, Steph. And Greg, meeting adjourned.